Following our meeting to order and reminding everyone we're on video so it's all being recorded and we'll start as we usually do with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance. So, thank you all for coming on this cold night and we'll start the superintendent's report.
Yeah, hello and welcome. I'm going to flip some of the items on the superintendent's report because we have a brief presentation tonight because we have some very special guests from China as part of a Chinese exchange program that we've had ongoing at Westwood High School for the last couple of weeks. It's been a phenomenal experience for everybody, I believe, and we have Lisa Spallin who's a Mandarin teacher at Westwood High School is here as well as Steve Willett. And so Steve, do you mind kicking this off?
Absolutely. First of all, a little Chinese language lesson. Ni hao is how we say hello to our guests and that's the only word that I know. I'll stop there. But Lisa Spallin and I want to take a few minutes to talk about the Chengdu Number Seven High School Chinese Exchange Program. We have several of our visitors here tonight. We have 12 in total. Looks like we have a good turnout here, so excellent, excellent turnout. They arrived here on January 31st and today is really their final day. They're going to be leaving tomorrow morning. They're going to come to school with their host students. They'll leave for, they're going to spend a couple of days in the Massachusetts area and then they're going to go off to Los Angeles. They'll be there for five days and then they're going to head back to China. So they've had a busy little, busy few weeks here. They are on break. It coincides with Chinese New Year which they celebrated on Monday with the snow day. This is the photo that you might have seen on the front cover of the Hometown Weekly. This is when they arrived on that Sunday on January 31st. I'm just going to give a little bit of background information about how this came to be. Lisa's going to talk a little bit about just kind of the school experience that our visitors have had and I'll just say a couple of things after that, so hopefully it'll be really quick, but just wanted to give you some of the highlights. Through someone that I met a couple of years ago, I was put in touch with one of the partners of a Chinese-based exchange program called Alpha Exchange and we were approached by this individual in early December about hosting or getting into an exchange with Chinese, with a Chinese school. December 1st was pretty close, obviously, to their arrival time. We talked a lot about a two-way exchange. We knew that would not be possible this year, but we're very interested in a two-year exchange, I mean a two-way exchange, pardon me. But for this year, we wanted to kind of kick the tires and have them come here and try to understand, you know, understand the experience and how it would work for Westwood a little bit more. Some of the other goals of the program, I think there are really three overarching goals. To learn more about exchange opportunities with China, especially considering the importance of China and our global community. To provide our Mandarin students here in Westwood with an opportunity to engage directly with native Chinese students. And thirdly, to broaden cultural awareness here at Westwood High School. There are a lot of unique characteristics about this program that I think would be best illustrated by looking at a sample of schedule. So this is a grid that represents the first week for one of our students. I don't know which student this is for, but this is, this was a busy schedule that our visitors had. And if you look at the color coding, what you see in the lighter color blue are the elective courses and we actually provided our full schedule to the Alpha Exchange company. Again, that's based out of China. They uploaded it to kind of a portal and then the students were able to actually select courses that they were interested in attending. And they fully participated. I think on the first day, someone took a pre-calculus quiz or something like that. Did really well. And so that's what you see in blue, so U.S. history, graphic design. So they were able to attend those courses. What you see in gray represent courses where they were shadowing their host student. So you see those sprinkled throughout it. And then what's really interesting is the dark blue. It's called the research project and we actually taught a mini-course to all 12 at the same time. That was run by Chris Hilton, Allison Donahue, and Christine Chu. Field trip last Wednesday where they went to tour the State House and then they also like walked the Freedom Trail and learned, you know, to be able to see it. Lisa attended that as well as Chris Hilton. So that was a great experience for them. This is just more the same. This was the second week and I'll just point out on Thursday, which is today, they gave presentations based on what they learned in that mini-course and that was just fantastic. Lisa made a great point. She said, we had a lot of our Westwood students there and she said, to the Westwood students, she said, "Imagine if you were in China giving a presentation of Chinese history in Chinese." And that's essentially what our guests were doing. So they were speaking English, talking about U.S. history and did a really good job, so it was just fantastic. I'm going to turn it over to Lisa. She's going to talk a little bit more still on some of the day-to-day interactions and experiences that the kids had together and then I'll just say a few words of the F.
So as Steve said, the core, or the core part of their program, that the rest of the program we set was developed around was this research piece that they were doing with our social studies department based on learning about Boston's role in the American Revolution. So this is a shot of the field trip that we took to downtown Boston one day. The students visited the State House. At one point, one of the comments was, "You mean the governors behind that door?" Like just like literally that door that's right there. And, you know, nobody in front of it, he's right there. Yep, right there. And besides that, we did the Freedom Trail and that was also the day that the students got to go visit Harvard and MIT and get a chance to look at some other campuses as well. Of course, they visited our Mandarin classes and when I say visit, they spent substantial time in my Mandarin classes. They spent a lot of time, you know, over several days with a number of different classes, interacting with the students. They helped them on presentations. They did presentations together. My students interviewed them. Even my Mandarin 1 students that with, you know, half a year of Mandarin behind them were able to find out some basic things about them in Chinese, which was fantastic practice. They were wonderful teachers. You guys, again, you guys are stars. Again, too, another part of this that was great was that they weren't just in classes where they were meeting with either my students or students who already have some interest in Chinese culture. They were in all kinds of classes. So that included our regular health class, regular gym class. She's in there. Emily, I think that's you over in there. Oh, she's not there, that's right. Also, they did come to celebrate Chinese New Year with our East Asian Culture Club that's run by Ms. Chu. And again, they were there in the cafeteria with friends every day and the people that you're seeing here, they're not only the host students, these are friends of the host students. So every host student played a role in kind of introducing them to a wider circle of kids and it was, it was a really great opportunity for a really wide swath in the school to get to have interactions with them on a number of different levels. So today, as Steve mentioned, they finished up with their presentations and one thing that, that we got out of that too was a bunch of surveys from students who had had an opportunity to meet with them in a culture class, a global cultures class. And we got some surveys just to find out what was it like for you to meet these students? What did you learn? What kinds of things surprised you? And I'm just going to read a couple of quotes because I think they just say so much about why this is a great thing to do. Your first time hearing this. "They are just like us. They like to hang out with friends and go to the movies. I thought we weren't going to have anything in common, but we did." Another one. "They are not at all what I stereotypically thought they would be like. They are kids just like us." All right, Steve, do you want to finish that?
Just a couple of words. This really, it was such a positive experience. We are very interested in having a two-way exchange, so as early as the spring of next year. So we're looking to do that. I've been in touch with one of the, again, the partner in that company. We're working on trying to make that happen. One of the really great things about this is as, as a school that just hosted these students, we're getting kind of a monetary credit from the company for having done that and we can apply that to an exchange where we go over to China. Hopefully with Chengdu Number Seven, it could be any number of schools in China. If it weren't to happen, the cost would be between $1,500 and $2,000 for the entire trip. That includes the airfare, some sightseeing opportunities, and then obviously integrating within the school itself. So it's a really incredible price and a great opportunity. And I think the other thing that makes it even better is it would be a true home stay. I think when you're living in the, in the home, integrating with the family, you really get to know the culture and understand it that much better. That's really it. Again, I wanted, again, give a, just a huge thank, thank you to our guests for being here and enriching our experience here in Westwood. We also have Damon here who's a teacher at Chengdu Number Seven. Is Tracy here? Oh, Tracy in the back is, works with Alpha Exchange. And can you just raise your hand if you are from China so that we can make sure we have everyone look nice and high? Higher?
It will be seven or eight days.
Great.
Well, thank you all for coming. I appreciate you showing up tonight. Hope you had a good time.
Brian, just one, one thing, I just want to publicly thank, I mean Lisa, thank you so much. She did a ton of work here. Chris Hilton who's not here also did a ton of work. We mentioned Ms. Chu who runs our Asian Culture Club and ran a great Chinese New Year celebration yesterday. And Steve, you know, if people were watching this, they might not know that Steve's our Director of Technology, right? So this was really his brainchild and he kind of pushed this and made it happen for lack of a better term and, you know, thank you very much, Steve. It's a, it's a home run, I think, on, on many levels and, you know, can't wait for sort of phase two if we're able to make it happen next year. So, great job, everybody.
We have some packing to do, so you guys can hit the road. Thank you.
Thank you again.
And before they head on, I just want to thank the host families for those of you who were here and came out tonight too. You guys were phenomenal. The kids just had the best. It was, you really rolled with everything, so that was great.
Okay, moving right along here.
Yeah, so still under the superintendent's report, we have just a couple of things to go through. I asked Sean Bevan just to give you a quick update per your request, actually, at last meeting on, I guess, what's occurred since we last spoke about the change or the elimination really, or repeal of our breathalyzer policy in regards to the MIA chemical health policy. So Sean, you want to give a quick update for?
Yeah, sure. So right after our meeting here where John announced this move to basically repeal the breathalyzer, the practice of offering breathalyzers to kids west of them, I met with Brad Pindell to understand a little bit more about the thinking in the police department about how those will shake out. We took that information, shared it with the captains in the winter sports just because they were to be most immediately impacted. That happened that first week after this, our meeting, which I think was just three weeks ago or whatever. So along with the A.D. and Brad Pindell there and we walked through our understanding of how this is shaping up. Officer Pindell answered a lot of their nuts and bolts questions, really, the questions about how they'll be processed at the scene is something that I think a lot of courses are about. And then I did kind of a, like a speaking and listening tour with our seniors. So every day for about a week, I had groups of seniors meeting for lunchtime meetings to talk about this new change and what it means for them and also some other things related to the business of senior year. And then today, in the last couple of days, I've communicated a great deal with the chief and been able to get him to look over the bullet points and the information for me sending out with families. You might have seen that that information went out today.
Sent that out.
So I sent out a letter today to all of our families, really putting pen to paper on what exactly this looks like, what it means, and got some responses and have been responding to those parents who have had questions. And then that went out to kids today as well via email and then through social media. So now we're really kind of blanketing this message out there about what this looks like.
All right, thank you. Any follow-up questions from the committee?
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
So if a child is at a party and police come, can the parent request that they be breathalized?
Yeah, I mean, they can always request it, but police have indicated that I don't think they're going to be bringing breathalyzers into these parties. As breathalyzers are just not part of their making of a process.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be at the scene, but it certainly, we've talked to the chief about that. It's certainly something I think some people might request. They're not obligated to do it, but I think they're amenable to it if they're able to.
The police are not obligated to?
I don't believe so. That's based on conversation with Sean, I have had with the chief, yeah.
I don't think they're crazy about the idea. I think they're, they're, they're using a standard of if their behavior involving alcohol or otherwise, it becomes a safety concern and then in those cases, they would share that information with the school and then if it involves alcohol or drugs, we would deal with it as an MIA comes once. That would be the only instance where the schools would be involved after the police are involved with the kid. The students I talked with had concerns because I think we're in a period of calibration here where they're going to have to understand how the police are thinking about this because, I mean, all they're seeing or hearing is exactly what I put out there, which again was vetted by, through the police. But what will happen is I think they'll start to understand when those interactions start to occur, how the police are thinking about it exactly. And what I've said to kids is the only way to ensure that you're not, so if you're at the mercy of that decision-making is to not be at those parties. And then finally, I'll conclude with, they were, all the kids, once they heard that, were a little bit, had some concerns, but once they understood that there'd be a single person being, delivering information to the police, to the school, which was the school resource officer, they felt good about that this consistency could be achieved or consistency was not being achieved on the scene with breathalyzers being administered or denied. And so now that the SRO ends up being the conduit, the singular conduit of information, they have a good feeling about that consistency. That was what came through in all the meetings I had with kids.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So moving on, just a couple more things. This is just kind of a random thing that Emily and I thought you should know about is that you, you might know, or you do know, that we're set to administer the PARC exam in this spring. The testing window's in May, so all of our grades three to eight will, you know, be administered, will administer a test to them sometime in the month of May. The PARC, as you again know, basically is going to disappear. It's going to morph into something else, MCAS 2.0 or whatever they decide, acronym they decide to name it later. Couple of weeks ago, we received an email from the Department of Education saying that we had been randomly selected to administer a PARC field test. Again, we field tested it last year, on top of our actual administration of the test. Now bear in mind, we're being asked to field test a test that will no longer exist, we think, in the future, at least in its exact sort of iteration. So what I did is respond and politely decline, even though it wasn't a question of them, it wasn't a request. So Emily and I kind of strategized. I reached out to some of the associate commissioners, kind of the second level, and just said, you know, we got your email about we're respectfully declining to administer it. Thank you very much. Gave some reasons, very thoughtful reasons, and it kind of led into a swirl of back and forth email, but our decision stands is what I've told them. And I hope you don't mind me speaking on behalf of the district. It's just an egregious over-testing scenario and so I...
So would we have the MCAS on top of the...
Well, we'd have like double PARC, basically. We'd have double PARC.
Yeah, MCAS now is, will only be in grade 10, it's PARC instead of...
Yeah.
How many, how many towns were they asking to do this?
I'm not exactly sure. Do you know?
I don't.
No, no. So, well, you know...
So it's probably some bureaucrat from midfield sticking it to us, huh? What were the benefits to us that they were trying to sell to you? They want us to do...
None, none. What, what I think's going to happen is, even though, even though the PARC, as we know, is disappearing, the reality is that the types of questions and maybe some of the exact same questions or format, you know, question formats will show up on this next generation MCAS. So they're still field task, field testing the, the type of questions that are going to be asked. So the benefits relate to them, you know, that they're, that we're trying to determine whether or not the questions are, you know, valid and worthy, really.
How many days would it take away from our construction?
So it was an additional testing session, so for grades three to eight would be an additional 90 minutes, no, sorry, for grades three to five, an additional 90 minutes and then grade six, an additional 110 minutes is what they asked us to do.
And it would be like, what, they're trying to test out the new questions that they're heading towards, you think? Is that what they're trying to get?
Yeah, I don't think so.
You think?
So Massachusetts, though we're moving towards this MCAS 2.0, we're still part of the PARC consortium and I believe since the state is still part of the consortium, they committed to participating in the field testing.
Sounds like a wise decision not to do that.
Yeah.
Have you heard anything about the disparity of scores between the online and the writing?
Yeah, I think I gave you, did I include an article in your, in your packet about that? Yes, and that's actually an observation that, that we had made as well, so it's, we have to kind of keep, keep an eye on that.
And in fact, at the middle school, the decision at the middle school was to take the paper-based this year.
This year. Allison really did a lot of work on that and she's really the first one to us at least suggested that there was a disparity and then it ended up being a national, a national trend. So, now, the, so, well, I don't know, I don't know, actually.
And how quickly can they do it so that it doesn't affect?
Well, long-term, everybody, long-term, everybody has to take computer-based tests.
This is the final year that we had an option for paper.
This is significant. Some of those scores were significant.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, I just wanted to let you know that I had done that. And one, one final thing is that, well, actually, the agenda items was follow-up to the February Space and Capital Need Study Forum, but we didn't, we didn't have that due to the snow. There's a couple of things related to this. I'm looking at Wednesday, February 24th as a possible rescheduled date. I'll, you don't, you don't have to commit to it right now, but I'll, we reached out to the architect. We found out late today that they were available in, you know, if, if not February 24th, we'll have to kick it, we'll kick it out a couple of weeks. One thing I want to say about this is we're, Heath and I have been really wrestling with this. We were originally going to try to submit a statement of interest to the Mass School Building Authority this year, so that would have been, I think it's due April 8th. And the reality is, time is getting really tight. And I, I think, and I haven't necessarily made a final decision on this, but I think it might be wise to delay that submission for a couple of reasons. They, Heath went to a big meeting last week and asked a couple of questions on our behalf and if you remember, we had to submit a statement of interest weirdly for one, one building, one of our highest need buildings. That would likely be, I guess it would likely be the Sheehan School, maybe the Hamlet, probably the Sheehan though. And then point them to our work on our master plan, which speaks to many other scenarios, consolidations, different types of renovations, system-wide. And we, we thought all along that it was okay just to point to the fact that we were deliberating and, you know, trying to figure out what the best thing was for the town. But really what we, what we're finding is that they want more of a commitment or a signal from the community that they're behind.
One plan.
One plan, or at least close to being behind it. And that's commitment, or really consensus around something. So maybe it's consensus around renovations, maybe it's consensus around, you know, consolidation. We're, I'm stating the obvious here, we're obviously nowhere near there. I thought we would be, but we're not. And they also want a signal that, that the town is willing to fund, fund the project, fund, F-U-N-D. Again, without having exact, you know, figures, that the town has looked at the project and signaled that they could in fact afford it at some point down the line. And I'm, I'm generalizing when I say that. So we don't have either of those things. We're not even close. So what I, what I'm suggesting, at least in this moment, is that we continue our work because it's very important work and I think, I'm hopeful that by the end of this school year, we do have some consensus around a plan and some commitment from the town that they're willing to allow us to go forward. But as far as submitting that paper to the, to the state to get in the queue for state funding, I think we need to delay that.
Quick question. How do they, is this a change? Because in the past, if they weren't, have they changed their guidelines? That's my first question. And my second question is, how do they define consensus? How do they, how do they measure that?
I don't know the... No, no, it's not a change. It's just really, ours is kind of a unique situation, so the, you know, the more we ask, the more we learn about it.
They want the whole story. They want, they want to submit something.
Well, that makes sense, right?
And they want the majority of the town, whatever town it is, to be behind that.
So would that mean going to like selectmen and bin con?
Or does that mean a town meeting vote?
No, it doesn't, no, it won't be a town meeting vote.
We don't have any.
Yeah, our move would be, we'll do something, we'll do, you know, we'll do public forums. I'm likely to go back on the road, right? You know, and, and do many public forums, you know, depending where we are. We do have to speak to the finance committee. We do very importantly have to speak to the board of selectmen because they're ultimately going to have to sign off on the statement of interest. I just, the calendar flew on us this year and all of a sudden, it's like, if we rush, we could rush it and get it done.
Well, I don't think anyone...
I don't think it's the right move.
I don't think anyone wanted to rush it, anyone.
But how do they...
And we, and we haven't even presented four new options, you know, for the public and the school committee to consider. You haven't seen them yet.
How do they expect the town to say they can fund it if they don't even know whether or not they have to go out for a debt exclusion and whether the voters will approve it, that sort of thing? How does that, I don't understand when you say you have to tell them the town has agreed to fund it, because oftentimes contingent upon a vote.
I think, I think with...
What they would look at would be like the debt service. Does the town have the capability or the, you know, possibility to fund it at some point?
Within two and a half?
No, no, just the general debt service of the town submitting the SOI.
But it's also...
Do they have the capacity to bring on a project?
What is the debt, or to death, that point and going forward, do you have the capability to put on a vote?
If we had four of the projects out there.
Well, I think really what they're looking for though, is in addition to that, is a signal that there's not a massive opposition from, let's say, of our board of selectmen or for the, by rights. So if the board of selectmen are well-informed and, you know, they sign off on the statement of interest, you know, we... of interest, you know, we can convey to them that, yeah, we're kind of all working, you know, we're all rolling the boat the same way, we're kind of all working towards the direction. If, if they see a lot, and this is what we're hearing, there's a lot of towns that there's a lot of opposition, you know? Not necessarily public opposition, because once you get into the, you know, project stage, there'll be natural public dialogue and debate about it. But I think they're more looking at the town government, to making sure everybody's on the same page. I'm kind of maybe speculating, but I think that's what they're looking for.
I think it'd be valuable if we came up with maybe five levels of the test, okay? The last level is, this is the final project, this is what we want, okay? We're five from that. But I think if we can get level one, which is, we need to reassess an aging primary school set of buildings that are costing an awful lot of money to repair one roof at a time, and something needs to be done. That's phase one. Now, is there a town agreement on that? Ishna, there's not saying we're gonna have three schools, but we need to do something. And we can say, this town, complete town support for that. Now, that's the beginning. So you go, and you say, we have no opposition, we got, well, we got funding, we got this and this, and then we go to the next phase, we go to the next phase. But, I mean, rather than just act like we're, you know, we're nowhere, I think to go to them and to say, we're very serious about doing something, we get the whole support from everybody, and then they say, well, what, what, that's phase two, we'll get back to you, but we just want to get in the door, get a foot in the door and all this. But I think it's important to, just to say to the selectmen and to others, is there anyone out there that is against us moving in this direction? Because we got, you know, of all the capital needs in the whole town, you know, 100% of the library needs are being met, 100% of the fight up, 100 places in the place. And look at all the buildings we're responsible for, and we've had a new one school in 10 years. You know, I think, is there town support for moving? There has to be. And we go to another level after that, but I think, I'd feel comfortable if we just said, here's point one, and we're working towards five, and that's, so we can all say, this town support definitely, we're looking into this issue, and we're working our way through it by looking for feedback from everybody on how to do it.
Good point.
All right, so then what would be our next step on this? Just get it back to us?
Yeah, so I mean, well, the actual next step would be, we have several new options that we want to present, so we do want to have another public forum, you know, sort of reboot, reboot.
So have you talked to them until 24th, or we haven't talked to them?
Well, so if, if you're all in agreement that sort of submitting this, you know, official statement of interest is...
Yeah.
By the way, one thing about that, too, is, I don't want to be Mr. doom and gloom, because I like to be optimistic, but we have to also be realistic about whether or not we're gonna get any reimbursement at all. And so as we look forward, you know, to picking a plan, we need to be very, well, we need to be very thoughtful. We might have to go at this alone, so whatever, whatever the dollar amount of the project is, we might be asking the town to pay, you know, 100%. I don't think we're gonna be a high priority, you know, for the state. So I just want to say that, sort of as some background. So if we're not gonna do that, we can certainly do it February 24th, but we can also pick a date later, because now we don't, we're not rushing like I thought we were going to have to. So it's up to you.
Push it out, so we don't have another snow day?
Yeah.
Time to get the word out.
Yeah, and I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to advertise and make sure that...
Right.
Okay, so let me, let me look at like, you know, second weekend march, maybe, or something. I'll put some dates out to the committee first, we'll talk to the architect, and then we'll start advertising.
Sounds good. All right, let me move then to public participation on any discussion or action items. You also have a chance to tap the hand to get someone inclined. See no hands, let's go right to the...
Oh, I missed that hand. Sorry. So Charlie, really doesn't make a difference whether or not we put it in for...
I'm psyched, you have to identify yourself.
Oh, sorry, Polyatridge.
Stand up, please.
Oh, Polyatridge, Kingswood Road, Westwood. So it really doesn't matter if we apply this year or next year, because you said that there's a possibility that we're gonna have to fund the whole plan. There's no financial benefit to making that April deadline this year versus next year? That was...
It's a good question. No, Polly, there's no financial benefit. All it would do theoretically is if we ever ended up getting in the queue for funding, you know, if they actually approved us, you know, it would probably push the whole project out by, by one year. You know, if we, if we ended up having to, let me say it this way, if we ended up having to wait for funding or reimbursement from the state, it would delay, let's say, construction for a year somewhere down the line. We're still talking many years out. So, yeah, it does, it kind of delays that. It won't delay our ability to work on this project, select a project, get that consensus we're looking for.
So when you were talking about your debt, debt amount, and what you were carrying for debt, is there any benefit to, like you said, this year versus next year?
I don't think so. That's a question that we'd have to ask of someone else, but the town, probably, yeah.
Is there another hand?
Yes. Cindy Buckley, 41 Milbrook Road. I know we're gonna talk about the calendar a little bit later, but public participation won't happen again until after you've had a chance to discuss it. And I just wanted to go on record, sort of as saying that I prefer the before Labor Day option. I don't know if you've heard from a lot of people, but I think summer's too long, and I think we need to get back to school before Labor Day. I agree with what people have said. I'm sorry? I don't know. Oh, hi, no, I don't know if they did. They might now. But, so, I just wanted to get that out there before. Thank you.
Are there other comments? All right, now see no hands, let's go with discussion items. First would be deliberations on the...
Yeah, so just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw a few slides up there. So I presented the budget at the last meeting, you had some questions which I'm gonna respond to right now, and again, very, just a few, a few slides. Be glad to entertain any questions you have, or comments you have about our budget. The state law, state laws requires us to, once a year, hold an official public hearing. So what I recommend we do, since it's sort of one and the same, is just maybe, maybe move to open a public hearing, just sort of go on the record.
Are we able to do that now?
No, you don't have to adjourn it, I think you just have to open, open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open our meeting into a public forum on the budget, 2016 to 2017.
Any discussion of that? All in favor? All right.
So if you don't mind, I'll just run through a couple, a couple of slides, because they heard a response to questions we had last, last meeting. So, I don't know if I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna sit if you don't mind. So there was a question, I think, Brian, that you had, just about our operating budget history, right, you know, our, kind of general level of increase. I took it all the way back to FY05, and this is really just for your information, but you see, and I just kind of represented it graphically down the bottom here, and I remember when you're actually using a picture of a roller coaster to show this, this major spike. And it's, and it kind of speaks sometimes to how we finance public education, which is, it's this year-to-year grind, I would call it. And, you know, there are years where you're at zero, and then you get so desperate that you have to do a 13% increase, which was our override year, back in fiscal year 2008. And then, you know, amazing, right, you do all the work to, to pass a large budget, and then we sink right back two years later to a 0% budget. And, you know, I want to point that out, because, you know, you might argue that the last two years have been, you know, relatively high increases, 5%, in this case, I'm presenting a 5.9%, 7%, but the reality is, it's just a slow climb back. And I said for years, we should expect probably a 5% budget almost on annual basis, if you want to maintain the level of service that you have year to year, you know, 4% to 5%. If we had kind of, I should put it on, if we had a straight line, it'd be, be a straight line. Instead, we end up with this, you know, this crazy, this crazy roller coaster of a ride. So I'd argue that, you know, me presenting a 5.9%, 7% budget this year is just a signal that we've been climbing back from inappropriate and underfunded budgets in prior years. So it's just, you know, for your information, with a little editorial thrown in, but I don't know if you have any questions on that.
No, I just think that it's, I agree with you, Emily. It would be wonderful if we could be stable and maintain that 5% increase every year, but I think it's admirable that the administration responded to what was going on in the economy, and, you know, adjusted the budget. So I think that what you're asking for this year is very reasonable, and the positions that you've asked for seem to be very necessary.
The one thing I'd say is, you know, we were at a meeting, a public meeting, actually, recently, and a public official, a local official suggested that, I think the exact words, well, you got 5% last year. You got 5% last year. And I remember making a comment that, I also want to remind him that $600,000 of that was for federally and state mandated, mandated services in the area of special education. So this notion that somehow we're good, you know, because we got 5% one year, to me is, you know, actually, I actually take exception to it. So again, it's a slow climb back, and I'm not gonna apologize for, you know, for putting a needs-based budget out to the community.
I think an excellent way to present this to a lot of these groups outside who are gonna be coming in. Need to send out to us, are you gonna talk about that, too?
I am, I am. Actually, I just wanted to...
Can I just comment before you start, actually?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
What year did you come here, John?
I, my first year, I think, was '06, '07?
'06 or '07, then in '05, I remember attending the school committee meetings when the school committee was interviewing potential candidates for superintendent. And I remember specific, when I was here, I remember specifically that I heard Casey, was his last name, I was thinking of this when we were doing the, when I was reading the budget material. And his credentials, he had all the credentials, and he made a presentation, and except this the way I say it, I can say it now, because you've been here a long time, but you were nowhere near his age. And I remember thinking, boy, that, I like what Antonucci's saying, but I think the age is gonna be a factor. And the school committee, I remember when they hired you, the reason they hired you, John Volter, conversation with them, was because of what you just did right there. That's why they hired you. They wanted a guy who knew how to handle the finances, so we'd start be going through what we're going through every year. And that's what you've done every year since you've been here.
Thank you. Now I'm old, though. Less hair and gray hair. Thank you, Jack, I appreciate that. Let me, let me go on, a couple other, so that's the history, right? There was also a question, oh, actually, I think Charlie asked a question about really special ed, but student services is our category, and what percent of the total budget it accounts for. As you see here, you know, accounts for almost 22% of our total budget, and that's for about, about 18% of our total student population. So it's significant, right? So it's, when you break it up, sort of this district-wide, a lot of this is tuition and transportation, it's a big amount. And then you break it up elementary, middle school, and high school, you look at over $9 million for special education. Again, well, it's actually student services. It does not include, this total does not include things that do fall into ABU, which is preschool guidance and school health, with nurses, you know? It would include things, positions like psychologists and speech and language, you know, so it is under that student services umbrella.
So that number is in line, the 21.6% is in line with the state average?
Oh, yeah, so you're talking the total budget? Yeah, both the 18%, yes, and the budget amount, this is not an unreasonable amount. In fact, actually, this was, Heath and I were talking about this today, this actually was a little higher. Yeah, it was almost 25% several years ago. A couple of things happened, though, so you might, you know, sometimes statistics play tricks on you, but two things have happened, though. We have reduced the number of outer district tuitions. When I got here, I think we had 42 or so outer districts, now we're down to, well, it's a range, but next year we'll project between 22 and 24, so that's, that's kind of chipped away at that. But also, our budget's grown, too, so our denominator, you know, got bigger. But it's in, it's very, it's in line with our history.
And the social worker position that you're proposing would be adequate?
Does that fall into student services on our budget? I can't remember, yes, yes.
Can I ask a question on that?
Oh, I saw it, I'm telling you that.
I was doing a little research on the social worker position, and what, just trying to determine what, what I want to know from you is what our expectation is of this particular person, and what the licensure level would be, and what we, what we anticipate his or her role would be in terms of addressing the needs of our kids.
So broadly, at this point, we've scoped out two big components of the work, right, clinical work with students, and then what we call inter-agency work in the budget piece, which was some of the liaisoning with the state agencies, as well as with outside treaters and consultants and therapists and things like that, so two things. The term "social worker" would probably indicate somebody with a master's degree in social work, which we call an MSW credential. It doesn't have to be that, and that hasn't been completely decided, so we're not ruling in or ruling out other things, but we like the idea of a social worker, because they do wraparound work with other organizations besides just schools, and that's an important need that we've identified. So it's highly possible it'll be an MSW-level clinician, but it may not be, maybe someone with a different credential, like LMHC, licensed mental health clinician. So we'll continue to refine it. Sorry.
That's all right. Just get my voice back. So does that mean that, okay, so liaison, clinical treatment, what does that mean exactly? What would this social worker be able to do for our children specifically? And would she work with individual children, or he worked with it? How would that...
So, yes, so a clinical social worker person would provide individual treatment, one-on-one clinical support, group work, which we actually think is very important, as well as professional development to staff, outreach to parents, parent workshops, as well as be part of the team meetings, so the IP process, as well as all of the different things that we're trying to do to connect in the community and with, you know, Westwood Youth and Family, so all of that.
So group work, by group what you mean, by meeting with a group of children?
Groups of students, yeah. And sometimes you have groups of things that are in common, so you might have students, maybe, who are working on strategies to manage anxiety, and that's a common subset of things, something like that. It's gonna be great.
And I just want to clarify something. You, before you proposed this position, you spoke to Youth and Family Services, and they were in line with...
Well, I have to say, I talk to Danielle constantly, and we actually collaborate on lots of things, but I didn't go to them specifically to vet the position, if that's your question.
My question is, are they in agreement that that kind of position would be extremely beneficial to... Oh, you don't know?
I mean, all I know is, they're not, I mean, I guess, no, we don't know.
Could you like us to inquire and do a little outreach to...
It's hard to say, it's hard to think they would think that they're negative.
I mean, I guess it's an assumption on my part.
Yeah, well, if your question is, do they have the staff to help do what we need to do, the answer's no. Yeah, because they, because they're incredible, like Danielle's incredible, you know, so they help any, any way they can, but they can't do what we're asking this position to do. Is that the question?
That's the answer.
I was hoping that was gonna come from the...
But I'm also back to, I see the need for it, but I'm worried about the children in the middle school, so this is for the high school, which is great, but you've seen, you know, middle school's a tough time, so how do we address it?
Well, not to take us too far off track, but we do have an adjustment council position at the middle school, which the middle school developed as a response that they felt was a good match for them. And if you remember, this high school person would liaison and connect on some very key programs.
Okay.
I want to say, too, we actually had an internal sort of discussion, debate about what to call this position, right? We kind of said, we were thinking adjustment council, social, they all kind of do the same thing. We kind of settled on social worker, because it provided sort of this broad, sort of both interagency and wraparound services and direct services, you know, so, don't, I don't want to get too up on the title, it's really the services.
Right, well, yeah, and that's what I was trying to say.
But the adjustment council has the same background as a social worker?
They do, with a little bit less on that community side.
John, I'm just, I'm, as we're looking at 5.7% increase and the response of the town, so coming at this from that perspective, I don't think anyone in the town, most people don't have any idea how much work the school department does for kids outside of normal, what everybody thinks is regular education. This is, now, we call it student services, but it's really providing social work services, all kinds of what, and I'm thinking of another word, you know, it's not, not non-traditional, but I don't think anybody has a clue how much money is in our budget to deal with other services outside of traditional education, which they just say, five minutes, you get fire trucks, please get, we do a lot that's not educational, but it is, it's, we take it on because we're the ones who are probably best able to do it, but I'm thinking of a better way to explain that part of our budget that goes to helping families and kids that really need a lot of help, that the commission or the system doesn't do it, and I think we make a tremendous effort, put a lot of money on it, and as people are complaining about 5.7 and the fire department only went up something earlier, I mean, we're doing more than most people appreciate education is doing. And I just, you have to be sensitive and thoughtful in what language you choose and all, but some way of explaining that we're dealing with a lot of people that need extra help, and we give it to them in a very creative management. We can't even do some of it in this town. We're spending, you know, almost $4 million outside of Westwood because we don't have the skill sets for these kids who need help. So I'm just thinking of, you know, 5.7 isn't like every other budget in the town, it just has to, you know, just do a little bit of what they did last year with some more people. I mean, we're doing a lot of extra work, and I'm not sure it's fully appreciated up here.
Couldn't agree with you more.
I think another big picture point we should make is, look, we haven't had an operational override in nine years, which is extraordinary given what used to happen, we'd be wrestling over whether we have to have an override every year. So the fact that you've been able to keep this, you know, budget, as you have, without the overrides is a great thing.
And also, so would you mind if I segue, it's good segue into our level of spending, because I think the question maybe came from Charlie, and it's something we look at frequently. This is, this is kind of small, I'm realizing, I don't know how big it is behind me, but we, this is actually a group of towns, comparable town, I say comparable, but a group of towns really, that we started looking at, I think, two budget cycles ago, in FY12, I went back and looked, and if my memory serves me, the towns I selected were either neighbors, you know, actually neighboring towns, or towns that were in our tech collaborative, and at the time, or on, I think it was the Boston Magazine list of top 25, I just, top 25 schools or whatever it was. So I kind of, so look, it's 33 different communities, plus the state average that we can compare ourselves to, and I sent you some stuff in your packet, but what this shows is that we're kind of, in this group, kind of in the middle of the pack, kind of where I like to be. I think on your, on your copy, and one of them I miss, I mislabeled the state average, but here's the state average, which is about $14,500. We're higher than that, we're at $15,300. By the way, this is FY14, this is the most current data that's available from the State Department of Education. So here's what, here's what I like about this chart. One, we're in good company, right? We're around kind of the middle of towns you want to be around. We're not way up here, check this out, this is Weston, they're always at the top, they like to, they like to be at the top, Concord Carlisle. So, but here's what I was curious about myself, is how we've done since, say, I've been here or even before I got here. So I'm going to flip really quickly to FY05, which is nine years prior, and look where we are. We're basically in the same spot. And I thought that was fascinating, I'm going to go back again. There's FY14, and there's FY05. State average kind of hasn't changed, well, obviously, the scale has changed, you'll see, right, we're spending, obviously spending more. I thought that was kind of interesting, so I took it one step, I just wanted to show it differently, and so I actually looked at the total increase in per pupil expenditures, again, from FY05 to FY17, actually FY, I should be, excuse me, I should say 14, that's my error, the same time period. So here's what this is showing. In that time period, nine years, this is the state, no, excuse me, this is Westwood, right? Sorry, my own eyes are terrible. So we actually grew, what this shows is that we grew over the time period at 32%, right? So our per pupil expenditure rose by 32%, which is not insignificant, I don't want to imply that it is, over nine years. State average actually grew at a higher rate, and many other towns grew at a higher rate. So even though we're kind of still in the middle, we actually grew at a slower pace. I just thought it was kind of fascinating, basically, I'm going to pat myself on the back, I think we've done a pretty good job as the school committee and administration over those years. Very interesting, Joseph, by the way, I was thinking of you. So, so Medfield, Medfield has a historically very low, this is too small, you can't see it, very low per pupil expenditure, and some people in the town are proud of that, and some people are kind of horrified by that. But interestingly, in this time period, Medfield grew at the highest rate of any town on this list. And what that shows is that their low per pupil expenditure caught up with them.
But they're still-
They're still low.
Several thousand less than we had.
Yeah, yeah, no, yes, right, but I thought that was funny, right? Because we talked about that all the time.
Curious, why would Dedham be spending more?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, you know, I don't know. So much, so much goes into this calculation, not only what the school spends, but also what the town spends on behalf of the schools, it gets factored in, it's this big-
What they report.
Health insurance, payroll services, things like that, so services-
If the town attributes it differently?
We put ours in. And so like, for example, we have a payroll coordinator in town, but the town actually processes the payroll for the town, they cut the checks, and they do it. So they, they take a portion, and they say, okay, X, X percent of their staff-
They need to do that because they're cutting all our employees' checks, where they associate that expense with school department, they report on our end of the unit.
Insurance is maybe, right? So liability insurance, property insurance, right, because they cover, they cover for the benefit. Well, it's pretty close to apples to apples, but it can, here's the thing, so if someone's spending 14.5 and we're spending 15, it's basically, what you want to see is, you know, major, major variations, you know?
John, thank you for those charts. I mean, I think, the takeaway I have from this, this is the second one you did, and I think my takeaway is that in the last year, we have data lost. There were 26 towns, 26 competitive towns, that had greater increases than us. So as we're looking at, you know, what we've done versus what really you folks have done, you know, which you did, you know?
You're going up since you've gone up.
There's 26 towns out there that we compete with for real estate prices, we compete with for our educational system, who have had greater increases. You know, we've held back, we've held back, we've held back, you know, and that's, so this may be a gulp for a lot of good reasons, but, you know, for nine years in a row, we've held back, you know, I think these are great charts for explaining to the general public who wants to know these people are out of control, or, you know, what's this outrageous amount? I mean, these are, I think, excellent ways to, you know, in one minute, explain some key points to do.
Yeah, thank you. Also, I want to point out, so these are just this random group of towns, right? And I think they're good towns to compare ourselves to. Stay wide, we fall, we fall in the, I think it was like 1/14th overall, out of about 320-ish districts. It's a little skewed, though, because some of the towns at the tipperty-top are towns on like Martha's Vineyard, for example, that have very, very high per pupil expenditures just because they're so small. And so I, I think we spend at a reasonable rate, but if you really, if you really get pure, pure rankings, we're actually, we're pretty low, you know, relative to the type of community we are. Anyway, I just wanted to share that with you. I think that, can I just borrow that, just that piece of paper, just draw this one here? I just realized I just gave, just wanted to see if I had it. Okay, so that was it, that was it, those are the things I wanted to share, and I also, the one thing I just want to introduce into the conversation, unless you have specific questions about this, is our capital budget. Do you mind if I just, so I'm going to have Heath just speak briefly to our capital request?
Sure, we have, we're level funded for next year, at least that's the budget, 756. We have five major cabinets that we're looking at. We're continuing our one-to-ones at the high school, also we're putting aside 25 for new access fund books. 96 for HVAC, that'll go to fund various projects, rooftop units around the system. $100,000 for roofing, we're accumulating roofing money, because we had that discussion last year at the Hamlin, you know, and sort of brought all this on. We will be doing some work at the Hamlin this summer, some perimeter work, but we're not, we're not going to do a major roof overhaul at this point, we're going to maintain it as it is, it's safe, you know, it's dry there, it'll be fine. But I still like to put aside and accumulate money for roofing because it is a large expense. So with these accounts, what could happen is, you can, you can spend prior year money. So we have money accumulating in the roofing account, so at the, and this is the way capital is supposed to look, it hasn't worked this way for years, but you're supposed to, you know, when you need it, have the money for it, not be in a panic, where are you going to get a million dollars? So you put some money aside every year in order to come up with that, and that's what we're doing with $100,000. 275, we're going to be replacing at least one boiler at the middle school, and potentially two other boilers in the system, so we're working on that right now, and that will go to fund some of that work. $60,000 in copiers, that's just a standard thing that we have, some years we had it, depending on the priority, I know this year we replaced some copiers, but, you know, we wait until there's like a million and a half copies on a copier, so we get the most life out of them, as I'm sure the school's going to attest to that.
Do we own them here?
Yes, we own them, we own them all, right? And that's it. I am happy that it is level funded from last year, because as you can see, we got a bump, usually it was a 4.6, but we're now up to 7.56.
Makes a lot more sense.
It does. I mean, our total ask is still around $2 million, so we're still prioritizing, but we're in much better shape.
Great, great. Does the public have any comments on this, given the fact that this is a public part of the budget funding process? How about the committee?
Just that it's great we set the money aside, I remember that vividly when we'd be scurrying. We'd be, the towny board at one time was scurrying for that, and it wasn't the dead one, so it's great to put aside.
So John, what is the response to our request at this stage?
I haven't had one, I haven't had one conversation.
What are the possible responses? They get 5.7, we're not even going to consider it? Suck it in and live with 4.5, I mean, what are the possible responses?
Well, what I would say is that the school committee has fiscal autonomy, I mean, the state law gives you fiscal autonomy over your budget. So I certainly want to engage in a dialogue and, you know, make sure we're all, you know, doing what's in the best interest of the town, but I would say, if the school committee sees fit to approve this budget, you can approve this budget, and we could theoretically take it to town meeting as it stands now, no matter who agrees with it or not. I don't want to do that necessarily. So I think our next step, I can tell you our actual next step, at least on my calendars, and I'll send this date out, I think we're meeting in a couple weeks with the FinCom Subcommittee? I'm going to say February 24. Tuesday, 23rd. That's just the education Subcommittee meeting, which, thank you for coming, Subcommittee up there, but, and then on March, I just got this date this morning or last night, I think on March 8, the Finance Committee is, I don't know what you guys call it, the public hearing? I'm looking at part of the aisle.
Actually, it happens to be our public hearing, but it's kind of your usual, you haven't come to, it's one of your usual meetings.
Yeah, so, well, I'll come, and I'll send this date out tomorrow, but February 8, that's, excuse me, March 8, we'll present to the Finance Committee, and it's always very good, productive conversation.
Do you have any conversation about another day of questions, do you?
No.
So no one's approached?
No. No.
Bob, what kind of feedback, what do you see as some of the pushback areas of, are these people crazy, or, you know?
I mean, you know, we have a guidance of 4%, and it's a 5.97%, so there's, you know, there'll be discussions, not saying that it's not a well-thought-out budget, you know, that addresses the needs, but the issue that FinCom has is balancing all of the different, all of the different needs. And, you know, it's a wide range of needs, and that's really what FinCom's been discussing a lot of.
So I've been very public about this, and I'm going to say it again, but I think at some point, we need to ask our community how they want to, how they want to spend their money, and I don't think anybody's doing that yet, which is, I think, one thing the school committee does very well, which is, you know, to have public dialogue about our priorities.
And can I, to that note, encourage people, March 7th and 8th is our public hearing on the warrant, and it'd be helpful if people came, because we had zero attendance in public the other night.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, again, and I said this last month, I mean, there's no debate, Westwood's an incredibly well-managed town, right, so the people giving us, you know, quote-unquote guidance on our, what our budget increase should be are thoughtful, and, you know, they're rational, and it's a reasonable thing. What I would say is, there's a lot of priorities being funded in the town budget, whose priorities I don't, I don't know, but we also happen to have, for example, almost $5 million in free cash. So what I would say is, I understand there's a guidance of 4%, but I would ask the community, would they rather tuck money aside for the future, or would they rather fund teachers to put in front of kids?
Well, there's another issue, and I've expressed this to the executive secretary, is that with respect to the police, the new police station, which I support, my impression was that originally we're going to get voter approval for a debt exclusion, so it would not cannibalize the operating budgets, but now I'm hearing what they want to do is fund it within two and a half, which takes money off the top, and there's less for everyone, including us, and, you know, if they want to do that because they don't want to go out for debt exclusion, well, I guess that's the decision, but it should not be impacting the schools. And if they do do that, and it impacts the schools, I for one will oppose it at a town meeting, they won't get their, hope to get their two-thirds vote for a, on such an issue. So we do have leverage in this process, and, you know, I totally support the new police station, but I don't support them trying to fund all of their things within two and a half, so that they don't have to do the heavy lifting of the debt exclusions and get voter approval. So we should continue to advocate for our budget and make sure that we don't get short-changed in this process.
I agree.
One thing, one thing a debt exclusion does, or an override does, and no one likes to do it, so I don't, I mean, we talked about it, our process back in 2008, well, that was really difficult, right? But one thing it does is promotes dialogue, and people actually come out and voice their opinions about priorities. To me, that's what's going to be missing in this entire conversation in town, right? Is if they just do it within two and a half, I mean, and I know, I know our meetings are done in public, but no one comes, you know?
Ultimately, that is their prerogative, as long as it's not taking it out of our part of the budget, and that's what, to me, is what they shouldn't be doing. If they, for whatever they determine to be their reasons, don't want to go for a debt exclusion, they want to try to fund it all within two and a half, well, okay, but don't make, don't then try to short-change the schools. So we'll see.
So what meeting do we have to go to?
The next, the next great opportunity would be, the only one I know, on March 8, and I will advertise this-
Seven, seven and eight.
The seven, oh, yes, sorry.
We're hoping to, it's, the eighth is the continuation, and that's why we're putting you on that night, because we're hoping we could get done March 7.
So March 7, it's a Finance Committee public hearing, so many other departments will come before them and present their budgets, I'll present on the 8. More the merrier, I appreciate you asking that question, so, yeah. And I thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, too, it's nice to see, much as I like my staff, it's nice to see other people.
Can I just add one other thing? I mean, those charts, I think, are phenomenal.
Oh, can you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, Integroso, 44 Oak Street, those charts are fantastic, and I think, you know, when you look at, it's almost like there's a second axis of ranking, right? Because everyone talks about how Westwood has, you know, it's top-ranked, that's why there's been such an influx of residents, that's why people move here, it's for the schools, so everyone's very proud of the schools, and so that speaks to your point about needing to be able to fund the schools appropriately to maintain that level of service that everyone expects and demands, and it's kind of like that second matrix, when you look at the rankings, Weston very high, Westwood in the middle, but highly ranked, so when you think about the value and the ability that Westwood has had to fund it effectively, that's kind of like another matrix, Concord, Carlisle up at the top, highly ranked, but then Westwood again in the middle, so I think that kind of correlation is really, you know, can be driven home.
I'm sure you come last summer.
You know, I used to, I used to use the term in the Finance Committee, sorry, Finance Committee, they didn't like it, but it's like your return on investment. Now, it's hard, because you don't have actual metrics, right? You know, and our business is kind of funny, you know, you don't have revenue and profit and all that, but I would argue that our return on investment is exceptionally, you know, relative to other towns, so I appreciate you pointing that out.
No offense taken, I was on Squared, when you were saying-
Yeah, so you used to be on our side.
She's still on our side, right, Barb?
Are there other, are there other public comments about the budget process? Committee members?
I, I don't want to get into a dialogue...
Identify yourself at some point.
Barb, sorry, Barb Delisle, ninety-six Skyline Drive. Not that I don't want to get into discussion, but just a dialogue right now. But just to give you an idea, one of the things that FinCom has really been trying to address and has been pushing is also, we feel that there's been a lot of discussion about somehow some tax relief. And in various forms. And that's also something that goes into the mix. So that's, just so you know, that's, that's been a lot of the discussion of what we're doing. And then I hate to use the word that FinCom used to use, but sustainability to, as well, you know? Yes, we have a lot of new income coming in from Westwood Station, University Station. But, you know, we're trying to make sure that we don't have a repeat of, for those of us that remember, when we got the N-Star money. And we wanted, then we end up spending it three times over, because everybody wanted the N-Star money.
Yeah, but, I mean...
No, Brian, we can't talk anymore.
We appreciate that, appreciate that concern, but, you know, that's also, you know, our prerogative. If the town wants to talk about sustainability, they should also be concerned about what they're spending on. So at the end of the day, we're going to make sure we don't get short-changed in this process. And if we have to go to town meeting to do it, we will. Any other remarks from the committee?
No, I think you said it all.
Next up is the calendar issue.
Yes.
Here we go.
We, we have to put this to bed tonight. Let me, let me show you what I'm, what I'm, what I'm... And I'm sorry, this is really my fault, because I, I've confused this, because I put a million, I put a million options on, on the table. I am still recommending to you a pre-Labor Day start. But we do have, we do have a second option, which I'll be, I'll be glad to present one more time. I'm going to have to stand up, if you don't mind. So, let me just say this, and I, and again, I, I mean, I have jumped last time, but I'm not trying to guilt you into a pre-Labor Day start. I do believe starting before Labor Day is, is just best for educational reasons. If, if only to get a jump start. And I, I use that term, I don't mean to be kind of flip or cavalier when I use that, but it just allows us to get our house in order before Labor Day, and then just hit the ground running and kind of move on. And still keep our eye on, on the end date, which just gets, it just gets long and gets late. I also want to say, so this, this version that I'm actually recommending, so our teachers, by contract, actually don't have to come back until the Wednesday preceding Labor Day. So in order for us to even do this calendar, I needed to talk to our teachers association. They ended up actually surveying their, their entire membership. And they put a bunch of options on the table, so I wanted to do this, but they did this and ended up, you know, gave that good information, too. They put all the options we've been talking about on the table. This actually, and actually surprisingly, this was their preferred option. And ironically, they would prefer to start, and this is what I'm recommending, start on the Monday and Tuesday, just like we did this year. Kids come back, I'm pointing to something I know no one can see. Kids come back on the Wednesday and Thursday. We have a four-day weekend, which it seems, everybody loves that four-day weekend. I think I'm missing out on something, so I'm going to work on that four-day weekend. I mean, work towards enjoying it. Four-day weekend, and then, and then get, and then get, okay? This calendar, that calendar then will get us out, in theory, with no snow days on June sixteenth. But even the worst case, hopefully the worst case scenario, at five, we'd still, we'd still squeeze into that, technically last week of June. After that, it gets really tough. I also want to point out that this calendar still has kind of an active day. It has the voting day, the presidential election, November eighth has a day off. I mean, that's just something that I put on really for conversation purposes. And that it still has a day after Thanksgiving off. We need one of these two days in the calendar.
The day after Thanksgiving, or the Monday?
Monday after Thanksgiving, sorry. We, we need one of these two days off no matter what, because we need one professional development day for our teachers, and it's a contractual thing. So this is my recommendation.
So if you, if you have, so if you have, if you do that on a voting day, so you don't disrupt the whole voting process on a presidential election, you do, that's your in-service day?
Yes.
And then why would you need the Monday after Thanksgiving?
Well, you don't need it. You know, just anecdotally, I can tell you that it seems like people really like, like that day off, you know, for, for family.
They like every day off, these kids.
I don't mean kids, I'm, I'm talking parents.
I've also heard from my parents that that day is difficult. People are working, both people are working. It's hard to get coverage on that Monday after Thanksgiving, just at the...
Yeah, yeah.
So if we, if we took that day off, off back, then what happens?
Well, that's, I just, up, up a day, we just...
Oh, all right, so we wouldn't...
Great.
Okay, all right.
Well, I mean, unless the committee thinks there's some great reason that the Monday after Thanksgiving off, why don't we, why don't we ax that?
Oh, everybody's saying, yeah.
Is that part of any contract or...
No, again, we need, we need one day off in the calendar. It's usually that day. So actually, next year, we'll have to probably put it back, because we need that one day. At a great time. This year is kind of, you have, you have an extra day because of the voting day.
So it isn't contractually obligated to be the twenty-eighth?
No, no, that's a, thank you for, yes, no. It doesn't matter where it is, actually. You know, that day, that Monday after Thanksgiving is something that...
How many years, how many years have we been doing it?
Before I got here.
No.
No, I think it's relatively recent.
That's recent? Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Yeah?
No, I think Paul Ash put it in place.
I mean, I planned to be agenda for that dinner.
Really? It makes a lot of sense. I don't think people do a lot of traveling coming back Monday. Well, anyway, so do, what is the committee's sense in terms of this being preferable starting before Labor Day? Does everyone think that makes sense?
Well, you're telling us that educationally, it's, it's better if we start before Labor Day, right?
So can't guarantee better scores on tests, but it is, yes, it is. And it is, and to reiterate, it is a preference of our teachers, too.
If it's educationally better for, if the teachers feel that that's what's best for the kids and they are pros when it comes to our kids' education, then I...
So that's one issue. The second, Charlie, you want to go into that?
Yeah, I'll follow.
Yeah, what if, the second issue then is, the Monday after Thanksgiving, I say, back to school.
For this calendar.
I'm already in trouble for saying no before Labor Day.
Okay.
Can I just throw one more wrinkle into it? Only because, only because I want to acknowledge a, a public comment. I think it was you, Cindy, right, from last time? Who had just suggested that, you know, if, without cutting a day, and I understand we might go that direction, you know, would you trade that day for October eleventh next year? Which is a really weird calendar, because you come back on Monday, Monday's off for Columbus Day. And then we have Yom Kippur off on, on that Wednesday. And I think Cindy suggested maybe grabbing that day and making a, a five-day weekend. I just want to put it out there as an acknowledgement that it was really, you know, a good, good idea. If we're going to take it away, then I don't think, then it's, then it's moot. Yeah, it's a weird weekend.
So, but next year, the, the eighth, who would be taking that day off next year?
No.
So if we take the day after, after Thanksgiving off this year, if we put it back in, and the kids go to school, and we have a groundswell of opposition, people don't like it, we have another day to play with next year, right?
Well, next year, the calendar will be, will look different, actually. And this is so funny, because next year, actually, will probably be post-Labor Day, no matter what. Just the calendar shifted, right?
I worry, I do worry about, I worry about putting, and I'm not, you all professionals in this, but we're just starting in September, and now you're, you're... If you put another day, I, I get what you're saying, Cindy, but I think you lose some momentum.
Oh, I don't, yeah, no, yeah, I just wanted to put out there, it was, it was an interesting idea, if you want to have a day, yeah.
No, I think it's great for the PM way, but...
It is a little too soon to have a really long weekend.
I'm wondering if you lose a...
I wonder how many people are going to come to school that day. They're not going to come to school. They're not going to come to school.
They won't come to school.
Is that Truman Officer around here?
You know, I will say, you'd be surprised, I ran some, actually ran some attendance data, because I was curious, before, after, how late. I mean, bottom line, our kids come to school. I mean, there, there's definitely people who will take an extended break that weekend, that's fine. But it's, it's fractional, you know, the people who choose to not come back, you know?
You know, if you're in the secondary system, second, middle school and high school, both parents, I don't know, miss, let the kids miss that much time.
And the kids don't want to miss typically at that age. It's hard to make up a day, yeah. Okay, so...
So can we vote on the...
So we're all in favor, we'll, we'll have to vote on this, but we're in favor, at least in this year, axing the Monday after Thanksgiving. So the, the kids we get out on the fifteenth of June, if there's no snow days.
Right.
Professional development is the day.
Is the, of vote, election day.
Right. And we start before Labor Day.
Yeah.
Yep, and they have a four-day weekend.
So you want a motion?
September, yes.
All right. So I'll make a motion to start school on...
August thirty-first.
August thirty-first, all right? To remove the twenty-ninth as a day off.
Twenty-eighth.
And to what?
Twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth.
Sorry, twenty-eighth of November is a day off. And to finish the calendar year on June fifteenth.
And use November eighth, which is election day, in-service day.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Any discussion? That very elaborate motion? All right, no discussion, all in favor?
I'm worried about that much, I, I really, if it's so traditional, I start, I, I don't, I don't know.
It's traditionally, people get irritated, why aren't the kids back in school by the end?
Well, let's, let's have another two weeks.
I don't want to think about it anymore, I just, I have...
No, we don't participate on the, on the, on the vote once the vote's impending here. We've already got input up there about pre-Labor Day, we're satisfying that. All right, all in favor? All right, so that's the calendar.
Piece of cake. That's good, hey, I apologize, I put too many sort of variables on the table this year. Won't happen again.
So that brings us to, well...
You did the calendar, you did the calendar.
We did the calendar, right? The overnight trips, one for the girls' lacrosse team, one for the boys' hockey team.
Yeah.
Girls' lacrosse team is down in Long Island. Boys' is to the Martha's Vineyard, traditional game, always gets snowed out, but we always approve it, so...
Yeah, so we recommend both. Yeah, girls' lacrosse team going to Manhasset High School to play a scrimmage on Monday, April eighteenth, during school vacation. Recommend approval, Sean recommends approval.
Is there a motion in favor of that?
Yes, make a motion to approve that, that trip under those terms that the chairman's just saying.
Any discussion? All in favor of that trip? All right.
Quick question, John. If we ever, we had the hockey team in here while they were state champions. Did we ever acknowledge the women's lacrosse coach?
Oh, yeah, we had them in here.
Oh, the coach?
They were in there after they won their last state championship. Yeah, but you know what happens a lot of times, is they, they win the championship after the school's, school's open. So a lot of them aren't around, so it's tough to get them in here. But it's a tremendous program, it's incredible.
Last year, we had a, last year wasn't a school committee meeting, but we had a jacket ceremony for them. I think during the thanks, I can't remember, I lose track, like Thanksgiving break or something, they had won the state championship. We brought them back in here, and we had a, a big ceremony for them, so...
On that Monday that you had off?
Yeah, exactly.
No, it's incredible, they, they've provided so many opportunities for the western girls to play that sport. For a town this size to, to win it all, year after year, incredible.
One of the westwood fathers was at a women's lacrosse game, Northwestern National Champion. Out in San Diego, so he's sitting there, and introducing the teams. So they got so-and-so from Westwood, Mass. So they went through four girls. So this guy from San Diego says, you know, where the hell was Westwood? Bigger than Boston?
Yeah, it's true, it happens in every league. My daughter plays in college, and the reason in this Catholic league, you got all these westwood girls, and it's whenever they announce it. Great. But anyway, let's move on to the hockey trip.
Yeah, so hockey, and I, I sent this out, I think, sometime last, last week. And I apologize, it's, it's late, but they're actually going this weekend to, they play a tournament on the Vineyard, leaving on Saturday, coming back on Sunday. Again, it's kind of a traditional trip.
Motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the Westwood High School boys' hockey trip to the Martha's Vineyard from February thirteenth to the fourteenth.
All in favor? Great. Now, we, approval of the minutes from the last meeting? Has the committee members had a chance to look at them?
Yep.
Any revisions, corrections?
Or make a motion to accept?
All right, second.
Second.
All in favor? All right, and now we get to our next public participation session.
This is actually, the revised agenda has new business on it. Just so I asked me to put new business on the... If there's any, I just, just, it's a good place.
I know, it's every week you forget to put it on.
I didn't forget, though, it's, it's, first time.
But there is no new business.
I don't know, she asked me to put it...